Good evening. Today is May 28, 2024, and now the time is now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. I see we do have a quorum council here, and welcome to all of you. We'd like Council Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Almighty God, we praise and thank you for calling us to serve your people. On this day after Memorial Day, we acknowledge all who gave some and some who gave all. This allows us in the moment as elected officials to be evidence of the sacrifice to preserve our democracy. Thank you for your service. Give us courage to be agents of change and to achieve positive change for Georgetown County. Finally, we ask you to heal our land and preserve our faith and righteousness in our nation. This we ask in your mighty name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Council Carolina. We move on down to the approval of our agenda. Please note that item 4B has been removed from our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
If a move by Council, Council Carolina is there, second.
Second.
Second by Council Elliot, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose. Motion carries. We move on down to our special reports and presentations. We'll hear from Emergency Services right there, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, Chairman Marant, members of council. Randy's got some slides up. You all should have also received a hurricane preparedness care package with everything you need to know to get ready for the season that starts this Saturday. I know it's everyone's favorite time of year, especially Walt's. He thoroughly enjoys it when we start talking about the H-word. So real quickly, I'm going to give you an update just where we are this year, what we anticipate, and a couple of changes that came in light this year. So Randy, a few in advance. But let's look at last year real quickly. 2023 was a very active season. We had 20 named storms. Seven of those were hurricanes, three were major hurricanes of category three strength or greater. But the good thing that you can see there by that map on the right is that a vast majority of those storms veered off into sea, or they were fish storms, if you will. They got my heart rate up, but didn't cause us much headache. The one storm that did impact us was Hurricane Adalia, which actually was Tropical Storm Adalia whenever it came through here, August 30th through 31st. We spent the night in the EOC several hours and made sure that Georgetown County didn't uneat anything. And then the next morning, we started our damage assessment process. So we came through relatively unscathed with that storm and pretty much the entire season last year. We hope that's the same for this coming year. But as go ahead and advance, Randy, as the forecast kind of shows, NOAA released their forecast last week, and it coincides with both the Colorado State University forecast and the AccuWeather forecast in that there's about an 85% chance of an above-average season. So to put that in perspective, we saw 20 named storms last year. They're forecasting a range of 17 to 25. Eight to 13 of those are hurricanes, with four to seven being major hurricanes. Will this play out? We don't know. We're going to prepare for it. We've been preparing for it for months, and we will be ready in the event that a tropical cyclone does impact our area. One of the reasons that we see this heightened forecast this year is two factors. One is the La Niña forecast is expected to take shape. Right now, we have coming off of an El Niña in the Eastern Pacific. That weather pattern kind of impacts what we do, what we experience in the Tropical Atlantic when we transition to a La Niña, which is expected to happen later this season. We'll see decreased wind shear, which will allow for vertical storm growth, allows for those storms to grow. Couple that with the well-above-average sea surface temperatures that we're seeing. All the ingredients are on the table to have a very active hurricane season. So that's what we're preparing for. Next slide. So what's new for this year? Since 2023, really, actually, since 2022, our office, as well as every other coastal emergency management office in South Carolina, has been very engaged with the South Carolina Emergency Management Division in our counterparts there, updating the state's hurricane evacuation study. This was last taken on back in 2010, 2011. So these are typically, they're updated every 10 years. The state sought federal funding to do that past couple of years and weren't successful. So we collectively decided we would all partner and update that plan internally in the state. What does that do? You probably saw some of our stuff going around about a behavioral analysis update last season. That was completed so that we have a better idea of what population we're talking to and how to message to them appropriately to get them to react when we need them to react in the wake of a storm. Other things were some revisions to our hurricane evacuation zones, which will also lead to some, ultimately lead to some hurricane evacuation timing enhancements moving forward, and several other things that I won't bore you with that really just help us as emergency managers prepare better and prepare our communities better. Next slide. The biggest is our hurricane evacuation zone update. You can see the map on the left identified as the old zones and then new map on the right. We made some pretty significant changes to the zones in Georgetown and Ori County for the northern hurricane region. We tried to make sure we had some consistency up in some of those areas, such as Garden City, Merle's Inlet, where we share a pretty fluid border. The biggest thing was we tackled this from the approach of, instead of looking at it as absolute worst-case scenario, let's look at it from a most reasonably worst-case scenario, most likely worst-case scenario. So it took us reducing our Zone A because the most likely storms that we see would require a Zone A evacuation. And in doing that with the reductions that we made and making those a little more easily identifiable with roadway networks and geographical boundaries, we were able to reduce our evacuating population in Zone A by 25 and a half percent. That's going to be significant when we start looking at evacuation timing in the future, and it should allow us a more effective and efficient evacuation moving forward. Zone B kind of picked up some of the loss there with A, and then Zone C also saw some reductions. These are all driven off of enhancements to technology, mapping, and resources that we had available, also real-world experience. We've had years and years of tropical cyclone impacts and been able to learn a lot about where water goes when it's not where it's not supposed to. So that's it in a nutshell. Those are the high points of what you can anticipate for this season. Our team is training this week and next week as well, the supplemental folks that come into the EOC as their not-so-day job, their ancillary duties, and getting up to speed on everything that they need to know going into the season and making sure we're all on the same page. So subject to any questions you have, that's all I have for you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, stand aside.
GSATs. Brandon, have you had? I have had no conversations with you as far as emergency routes, et cetera, et cetera. Have you had any conversation with anybody ever with GSATs as far as infrastructure and what we need to be looking at?
No, sir, not with regard to the evacuation pathways. You know, we're limited right now. We have US-17, but we have not had any of those conversations.
Would you take an action item from me and give me a call? And you and I, and maybe Angela and Holly can sit down at some point?
Sure.
And I want to get your views on what you think we need to do.
Yes, sir, most definitely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Brandon, I have just one thing. With like the thousand-year flood we went through and your control center there, looks like that's a picture of it there. Imagine the same thing would go on during a hurricane, pre, you know, all the way up to it hits until it passes through.
Yes, sir.
These seven up here, we don't want to get in the way, but we want to help. Now, this is your opportunity to kind of be the boss when the emergency happens.
And you all have a liaison, our county administrator, through the way our organizational chart works. And really, the best way that you can help us in an emergency and help the community
Stay out the way.
Is
You're willing to say it, I just said it for you.
Is to follow that chain of command, if you will, and work closely with Ms. Christian or whoever the designee is for the executive group. We're going to make sure that you have the information that you need to answer the questions that are coming from your constituents.
I think we would be better served if we were out in the field, so to speak, versus underfoot with you and your people.
And there's a benefit there as well, you know. There is a benefit there because you can be eyes and ears in the field as long as it's safe to do so. But if, you know, as always, the Situation Room in the Emergency Operations Center is designated for the Policy and Executive Group. So if you do come to the EOC, you have a designation there. But like you said, the photo there of the Emergency Operations Center that we also call the Fishbowl, it becomes quite chaotic. So we have a lot of trained folks in there that are doing their jobs. And, you know, we will feed you what you need. And if you have needs in the community, we can take those and work those as well.
How, when a storm comes through, one of the worst things possible, I know you guys with your fire departments, EMS, so forth, spread around the county, you guys will be able to communicate. More than likely, we will lose cell service. Is there anything set up that maybe us seven can have a way to communicate back to the Fishbowl? Has that any thought been put into that?
We could work on some ideas. We recently implemented through some grant funding, a redundant, basically three-tiered redundancy satellite radio capability. Now the county owns its own satellite radio frequency that we can operate, you know, without interruption on the state frequency. So it may be something that we can work towards building and expanding in the future to where if, you know, all communications are lost, we can have supplemental resources to where you all can communicate back and get the same message.
And most of the time on a hurricane, we'll have an advance.
Absolutely. We start our planning, you know, we're starting in here, some of us, for 120 hours before the evacuation even starts. So you're talking, you know, a week before the storm even thinks about being here that we're up and running. So you're seeing my emails, I'm sure.
You know, we could even put a wind gauge on the end of Bob's pier. That's been done. And when it gets up to about 140, he can be out there with his rain, Charlie Brown rain suit on saying, hey, Brandon, it's 140 over here on the neck.
That's been done.
Another option as well, sir. It's another option as well.
I do have another question based on Raymond's question. Are we in the queue with FEMA to go back to Emmitsburg anytime in the future?
We've reapplied twice for that program, and we were denied, I think because we've already been twice. But we keep applying every year, so we'll put it back in.
That would be, you all would really enjoy going through that week training. It's amazing. So work on that for us, please.
Well, and we've also
We need to get Raymond up there.
We've also explored the option of doing our own boot camp here, if you will, that would mirror that process up there.
Boot camp.
Boot camp.
Already been through one time, I'm not going through again.
There you go. Any other questions?
You have a question from Council for Mr. Ellis. Thank you, Brandon.
All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
We move down to our Employee of the Quarter recognition, Mr. Heckman.
Yes, sir. So you'll see Mr. Ellis up here again. He has a couple of different, actually, three different things that he's involved in. So our first award tonight is Employee of the Quarter. You guys, council has seen this award multiple times. You know, once a quarter, we, employees are nominated for going above and beyond their normal duties. The person who is receiving this award tonight is our Administrative Lieutenant, Brianna Knox. And I would ask her to come up if she is so willing. I think she has a 20-minute speech prepared. So as I said, normally, we nominate folks who go above and beyond the call of duty. Brianna's normal job is above and beyond the call of duty. As reading through this list, it looks like Chief McClellan goes on the premise of, I'll just keep piling it on until she bucks. And so far, she hadn't bucked, so he's still piling it on. If you read through the language, Brianna does a whole host of things. She is primarily logistics-focused, making sure that all the supplies and equipment are in place, particularly on the EMS side. You know, there's a lot of consumable items that they use, bandages, medications, splints, whatever the case may be. She makes sure those ambulances are well-stocked, that we have inventory in place. She coordinates, she's the narcotics officer that deals with state de-hacks, where those are strictly controlled. She does, she's a maintenance liaison, working with both vendors and internal maintenance. She makes sure all the stations are up to par, that the firefighters can do their firefighting job instead of worrying about nitpicky little items around the stations. But the main reason why she was nominated, and this is the duties that she took on involving new hires, promotions, and ceremonies that have recently been put into place. In the past, we've had a lot of vacancies in both of our fire departments. And you know, we've been doing the recruit schools. So we thought it would be best to formalize that process. We do badge issue ceremonies, we do promotion ceremonies, we do award ceremonies. And those are not just for the firefighters, they're also for the families. And it means a lot to these folks to be recognized and to be awarded. Lieutenant Knox has taken on the duty of coordinating, preparing the venue, making sure all the people are in place, making sure everybody knows what to say, and their speeches written, and all the badges and awards are, and the venue looks fantastic, and making sure that the families are feeling welcome too. That's a duty that she took on of her own volition, above and beyond everything else that she does. And for that, we're recognizing her as the Employee of the Quarter for the first quarter of 2024. Congratulations. We will go up.
Congratulations. Congratulations again, Lieutenant Knox. We move on down to our Innovation Award.
Yes, sir. And very unusually tonight, we have two Innovation Awards that we are presenting. This is not a regular occurrence. What we want, we issued this Innovation Award for persons or a person or persons who come up with a very unique solution to a problem that has arisen. The first Innovation Award tonight goes to our very own Randy Akers and Mr. Johnny Pope from our MIS department. Johnny, I do not see Johnny with us tonight, so we may have to superimpose him on a photograph. But an issue came up, and Director Ellis nominated these two. An issue came up in our EOC. You know, we're preparing for hurricane season. You see the need for a new EOC, as we talked about on the CPSD Commission. Everything in our EOC is aging. Things don't work the way they should. Director Ellis recognized that there was a need to upgrade and repair some things. We got some pricing, and a vendor would be happy to come in and fix it for about $150,000. He had virtually no budget, so that was kind of out of the question. So he solicited the help of some folks. Randy started taking a look at it, and he had some ideas. And it took him a while, but he got it all pulled together, was actually able to come up with a fix and a solution that'll get us by hopefully through this hurricane season for about four grand instead of 150,000. He had to involve Johnny in the process to make sure, Johnny's one of our network engineers. He had to make sure that all of these solutions that he came up with would actually comport with our network and everything would work seamlessly. So for all the time and effort and innovation effort and innovation that those two came up with, the, the solving this very needed problem or very critical issue, we want to recognize them tonight with an Innovation Award. So if we could get Randy to come forward, Director Ellis, I think it'd be prudent if you're in the picture. Mr. Chairman, one more time, please, sir.
Midway Fire and Rescue.
Yes, sir. And this next Innovation Award, as I said, these, these folks found a unique solution to, to a very, very big problem. Um, and this goes to a, a large contingent of folks, and you'll see a lot of them here from Midway tonight. So we may have to do some tiering in the photograph here. Um, but our firefighters have to undergo rigorous physical demands in their job, and we have to make sure that they are physically fit and able to undertake those tasks. The Safety Committee at Midway Fire got together and they wanted to, to solve a solution. They had some tests in place, but they were sort of hodgepodge and not all together. Some of them really didn't fit the criteria needed for NFPA standards. So they started looking at how can we solve this issue to have a robust, meaningful training opportunity and physical fitness test in place on site, which is critical, that will determine where our folks are and where they need to be, or if they're simply in a good place, they need to keep it up. So this committee did a lot of research. Um, this is a very nationally innovative approach to what they did. They talked to a lot of different fire departments all over the country, uh, talked to the folks at NFPA, making sure that all of this stuff would meet the criteria, and came up with, with an approach that I don't know, maybe one or two other people in the country have come up with, um, at least in part. And I went up, had the opportunity to go up and, and get a demonstration of, of this particular activity. It is quite impressive. Um, I, I got tired just looking at the people go through, through the exercise. So there's no way you'll ever have to worry about me being a firefighter. Um, I would probably die. But it, it, it is a remarkable effort they went through, and they are very, very proud that they did this with no money. Um, they repurposed items that, broken ladders, um, handles off of equipment that was no longer functioning. Um, the only ex, money that was actually laid out in this, they needed to buy, it's a extremely heavy sled that after they go through all of this routine and they're wore out tired and just about out of oxygen because they have to be in a full mask and everything, they have to push this sled down a certain distance and then hook to it and drag it back. And those things are very expensive. One of our community members actually heard about what they were trying to do, stepped up and donated that, that sled to the fire department. Um, and it's had an added benefit. The chief and the Safety Committee, um, had a lot of discussion about, you know, if we have a firefighter who's out for any period of time, um, and let's say they were on medical leave for whatever reason, and they've been out for five, six, seven, eight weeks, maybe they're on light duty, on desk duty. Well, typically, when the doctor releases them to come back, we throw them right back on the rig and put them to work. This now gives us the opportunity to ensure that they can safely return to work by being up to those physical standards. So it's had even more benefits than just the testing requirements. Um, and, and you'll go out and you'll see a lot of these folks at, at Midway. If you go by the stations, um, they're out there practicing because they know the test is coming. So it's been a, it's been a fantastic thing. If y'all get a chance, I encourage everybody to go by. It's quite amazing. Um, but we want to recognize the entire Safety
Okay, we're still with Mr. Ackerman. The Gallagher's 2023 High Performance Employer Award.
Only for another moment, sir. Uh, my job here tonight is to introduce Mr. Steve Love. Steve is our, one of our agents with Arthur Gallagher, um, helping out with our health insurance initiatives, employee wellness, um, all the things that keep our employees ticking and working every day. He's going to present the award to Georgetown County.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Walt. Members of the council, thank you so much for letting me be here. Um, as we talk about Georgetown County being awarded one of Gallagher's High Performance Employer Awards. So what does that mean? So let me give you a little bit of a backstory. So every year, our company, Arthur J. Gallagher, surveys over 4,000 employers nationwide, various questions, metrics, um, to see what makes them tick. What are they doing that others aren't? What makes them potentially a high-performance employer? Um, this year, we've culled down our 4,000 question survey in two regions. So Georgetown County, of course, falls in the eastern region. That's everyone from, uh, about 185 employers from Maine all the way down to Florida were identified as potentially high-performance employers. Um, out of those 185, 19 organizations made the finalist of being a potential high-performance employer award. And, um, I'm proud to say and just privileged to be here to announce that Georgetown County, um, out of all those employers, is the best at physical well-being, a high-performance employer. So in other words, what does physical well-being mean? Controlling your healthcare costs and health plan performance. So it's a great award that Georgetown County has, um, has won. I'd like to go through some of the metrics that, uh, allowed them to get this. Uh, when we take a look at the metrics involved, several key metrics rise to the top. Um, what companies or what employers or what entities excelled in these certain areas. One is strategy. So what a strategy. So from a higher level, um, I think what really stood out for Georgetown County is that its top-level engagement, all the way down to the employees. And what I mean by that is everyone from Angela Christian, Walt Ackerman, uh, Karis Langston, Amy King, uh, Pacini Walker, they're all rowing the same way. And it comes from Angela and her team, um, that, hey, we want to be a high-performance employer. We want to control our healthcare cost and we want to really excel at what we're doing. So that was one of the factors that really stood out. Another factor was a very diverse, what we call internally for your internal employees, like a wellness program. There's a diverse, uh, representation of that wellness program. It's just, it's not all just the healthy people, of course, that would be too easy, but it's different departments, different, uh, people in different walks in their wellness journey. So it's a really cross-section of your employee base, gives different perspectives on what might work. So, um, the strategy really stood out. Another key metric, which I think really put them over the top, which I'll go into in a second, is the results category, where the rubber meets the road. So what, what does the results category mean? Is how effective is the county or any other employer doing at controlling their health plan cost over a three-to-five-year period? One year might be a flash in the pan, but are you sustaining these healthcare costs, either sustaining them or reducing those healthcare costs? And, uh, the county really excelled in that category, which I'll touch on here in a second. Um, and then not only from a cost perspective, but is there a demonstrated reduction or at least sustaining, uh, employee health risk factors? All that means is, are our employees getting healthier? Things like, are we reducing diabetes or reducing cholesterol, hypertension, those key metrics? So those are some of the things that we're taking into account as well. Not only the physical aspect as well, but something that we call Gallagher Better Works, doesn't look at just physical, which is obviously important, but is this employer, in this case Georgetown County, are they doing things for financial wellness, emotional well-being, um, career advancement, social, community outreach, those types of things to make up a whole total organizational well-being, uh, picture. And then, of course, we've talked a little bit about, uh, Walt, what's about innovation. So, uh, no, no stranger to your health plan either. Um, the county has implemented several innovative strategies. One that you guys know and love is the onsite clinic. Um, also within that clinic, I'll call it like health coaching to keep your employees engaged, keep your chronic conditions at bay, and then, uh, some prescription drug strategies that we do internally to help really lower the costs of prescription drugs. So those are the four key metrics that we took a look at. Digging down just a little bit more, I talked about the top-down culture, beginning with Angela and Walt and their teams. Um, they really are committed to improving the lives of the employees. So, um, as you'll see here in some of the results, they are actually lowering the healthcare cost on a five-year average, um, versus other employers out in the marketplace. You see an increase typically. So, um, hats off to them for that. Uh, the onsite clinic, like I mentioned, drives positive outcomes, gets folks healthy. Um, and then from a wellness committee standpoint, again, we mentioned, uh, it doesn't matter what health status you're in, we've got a cross-section of members that, um, will try to give feedback and input on what the best course of action might be. Uh, from the clinic perspective, uh, most of you probably go to the clinic at one time or another, but what really stood out is there's no cost for any employee to go to the clinic. It could be for preventive care, it could be sick visits, it could be medications at the clinic, um, or your chronic disease manager or your chronic condition management. And that's, that's fantastic. And you might think, well, that costs a lot of money, right? Well, the proof is in the pudding when we get into the numbers. Um, and then finally, I think that, you know, to Walt and Angela and the team, they don't sit still. It seems like every, we meet very routinely and either every meeting or every other meeting, at least every six months, we're like, they're coming up saying, all right, what else can we do? What else is new out there? So they're very innovative, forward-thinking, not sitting on and resting on their laurels, uh, which really stands out. And that's the only way you're going to actively manage your plan. All right. So let's talk about the results. And this is really something that the county should be proud of. Um, it's not easy, but these guys have really done it. They hit it out of the park. So, um, I'm going to, we break everything into a, uh, insurance nerd category, per member, per month. So basically all that means is we've yielded great results in decreasing the per-member-per-month claims experience for the county. Um, and as a result, there has been no increase to employees' cost contribution towards their insurance premium since 2018. And we deal with a lot of clients, and that's really unheard of these days, to have that long of a track record without raising premiums to the employee. From a five-year total reduction in costs from 2019 to 2023, you see normally healthcare costs rising, theirs has decreased 13% over that five-year span. It's amazing. Four-year average is about 3.2%. Cost savings, not an increase. And the industry trend that you read in the paper, or you might deal with companies yourself, can be anywhere as low as 5% to 7%, 10%, 15%. So for them to accomplish these, um, these reductions in their trend costs and their health plan costs has been, um, nothing short of miraculous. So kudos to you guys for that. Um, and of course, controlling your cost is important. That means no increase to the employees, but also improving the lives of the county employees is critical. And I wanted to share some of those numbers with you as well. The, you know, we're here, we, we, you probably know the, the major metrics that we look at when we're trying to keep your claims costs low. Um, hypertension, high blood pressure, in other words, diabetes, high cholesterol, and then maybe metabolic disorder. Well, the county since 2019 to 2023 has had a decrease in those factors among their populate, the employee population for that five-year stretch. Hypertension has decreased 35%, diabetes 24% reduction, hyperlipidemia, which is high cholesterol, is of a decrease of 44%. And then metabolic disorder, uh, which is obesity and related conditions, is 9% reduction. So, um, hats off to the employees who, who are attaining these, uh, metrics as well, but also to, uh, the county employees and the, the leadership team. So again, the results speaks for themselves. Uh, the county team of Walt Ackerman, Amy King, Angela Christian, Karis Langston, and Pacini Walker, um, they're very forward-thinking, especially among the peers that we surveyed. And it's our privilege as Gallagher to be a part of the great things that they are doing. So on behalf of our company, Arthur J. Gallagher, I'm proud to present Georgetown County with Gallagher's High Performance Employer Award for Best Results in Physical Well-Being.
on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his, her, or a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Um, please note the timer on the screen. We ask for, at the expiration of the timer, that you promptly conclude your comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comments this evening?
Yes, sir. We have eight speakers signed up today. Each will have three minutes, as you stated. The first is Mr. Dan Stacy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. I have items 11C, 11F, 12A, and 12B. I will not address any of them here at this podium, but in your discussion of them, if you have questions about them, I'm available for court, for, to answer them if you have any. Thank you.
Dwayne Draper.
Good evening, uh, Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. First, I'd like to thank, uh, Mark Hahn and all of the commission members of the, uh, Capital Project Sales Tax, uh, group for their focus and stressing the importance of transparency and community engagement in their process with their many meetings, uh, to help build, uh, trust or restore trust within the community. I think it's a great thing. A year and a half ago, the Planning Department did a great job publishing the natural resources element, producing six drafts, and engaging with many community stakeholders from across the county. The Planning Commission unanimously approved that document in November 2022, a year and a half ago. It was then substantially redlined before it ended up before county council. In January 2023, this body recommended deferring that element so it could be considered in concert with the upcoming revision of the land use elements. It was later tabled and completely disappeared from subsequent council meeting agendas. Well, now is the time for the natural resources element to be dusted off and reviewed concurrently with the land use element. These two elements are the most important elements in the comprehensive plan. On page one of the current draft of the land use element- On page one of the current draft of the land use element, the Boudreaux Group recommends the county return to a holistic approach of updating all required comprehensive plan elements simultaneously in 2025 or 2026. It's too late for that now, but it's not too late to apply that holistic approach to the land use element and the natural resources elements. We all know that 96% of community residents responded to the land use survey in late 2021, stating that protection of natural resources was their most important concern. Quoting from the Boudreaux Group in this draft of the land use element, "The pending 2024 natural resources element plays a crucial role in tandem with the land use element, influencing sustainable development of the region through a holistic approach." The natural resources element sets forth explicit goals and strategies aimed at protecting and enhancing the county's natural assets, including wetlands, watersheds, floodplains, habitats, and agricultural lands. County Council recognized the natural resources element needed to be considered in tandem with the land use element. Now is the time and opportunity to do so. I respectfully request that council formulate a plan to consider both elements simultaneously. That was your intent when deferring consideration of the natural resources element in January 2023, and it will go a long way in restoring the public's confidence in your deliberations in honoring their input. Thank you.
Mary Beth Klein.
Good evening. I just first wanted to say congratulations on the Gallagher Award. To achieve the results that Steve shared takes a lot of effort, and more importantly, leadership on each of your parts, and you're each to be commended. That's great. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that you defer any action on the future land use element until the density numbers for the Wacoma Neck are tabulated, quantified, understood, and shared openly. More than 250 citizens attended the last Planning Commission meeting, the majority of them from the Wacoma Neck. Two out of 29 people supported the plan. One shared that not all density is bad, and she is correct. Managed growth can work. But unfortunately, that is not what we've experienced on the neck. The population on the neck has increased more than 300% over the last 40 years. And much of that growth has been allowed to go on without any increase in infrastructure to support it, without any thought to the environmental impact it's had, and unfortunately and sadly, without any regard to the gentrification of our minority community. And that is what the other 27 residents spoke to. Daily traffic accidents on 17, sunny day flooding, and very passionate pleas from our Pettigrew and Parkersville neighbors, begging the county to slow down and take a closer look at the impact that this plan would have on them and their families. Now, some say that this draft does not increase density on the neck, but that is just not true. We have run the numbers, and it increases density on the neck conservatively by more than 50%. Holly herself shared at the meeting that no one in the county has actually run the numbers and that it was not in the scope for the Boudreaux Group. This is just unfathomable for something as important as this plan. This is our future for the next 20 years. So please, please, before we go any further, let's run the numbers. It's our collective future, and I think it would be unconscionable for any of us to make any step forward without doing the diligence to ensure that what we are building for the next 20 years is a future for all of us. Thank you.
Maureen Mulligan.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I attended the workshop prior to the county council meeting here, and I just wanted to mention that a project that was put in as a proposal to upgrade our MRF, which is our materials recovery facility at our landfill, is not appearing on any of the lists. It's on the website, application, I think, number 55. However, I'm not finding it on the list, and it is critical infrastructure for the entire county. The MRF allows us to process our recyclables. We have a huge buy-in in county. Citizens want to recycle. We get a lot of materials to recycle, and we cannot process them fast enough. The proposal that we submitted was to improve the MRF. To, currently, we have a 50-foot conveyor belt that we have six human beings hand-sorting materials. I would love to, you should all go take a trip down to the landfill and just check out the facility because it's in desperate need of upgrades. Again, it's on the website. It's number 55, but it must have been overlooked somewhere in the process. We do already have funding. We've been working with a variety of recycling Pepsi-Cola, and there's a circular recycling, it's like a coalition of people wanting to improve recycling infrastructure. We've also applied to EPA for grant funding. So there's a lot of money that we have been told we're high on the list if we can get this going. We also have a variety of proposals that we put together that cost, we can, you know, arrange for a different project that costs less versus, you know, try to control costs, basically. It's basically kind of a dirty little secret here in Georgetown County that our solid waste management cannot be processed like it needs to be processed. Currently, each and every person in Georgetown County produce, well, throws away four and a half pounds of trash every single day and produces almost 10 pounds of trash every single day. That has to go somewhere, and we're in desperate need of improving our infrastructure for our solid waste management and our recycling. And that's really all I wanted to ask you. To please take a look at the webpage. And I don't know if the committee members are still here, but application number 55 is really important, and it's for the whole county, not just part of the county. All 15 convenience centers come to the MRF. So thank you.
Peter Eisenberg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Eisenberg. I've lived on the Wacoma Neck for the last 25 years. I attended the last two Planning Commission meetings and spoke out about the density and the limited amount of road structure or infrastructure we have on the Wacoma Neck to handle all the traffic. We simply cannot handle the existing traffic, and it's only getting worse. We have had plans with Highway 31 to extend to Georgetown County, and that project got ended a number of years ago. And I think it should be restructured and revisited. You know, a good part of the traffic coming through the Wacoma Neck is going to Georgetown, is not even staying in the Wacoma Neck. But all it is is make our traveling more and more difficult. We don't have the infrastructure to support it, and we have to find a way to fix that. We heard this evening about emergency evacuation during hurricanes. We're blocked on the north by Brookring Gardens, and we have one set of bridges going south into Georgetown. We can't get out of the Wacoma Neck in terms of an emergency. That's the simple fact. It's time to look at the issues and fix it, not make it worse. Thank you very much.
Rod Stalvi.
My name is Rod Stalvi, also known as taxpayer and voter. I'm here concerning Eight Oaks Tree Park. Your ordinance number 11E, I read, and it's kind of less than truthful. Eight Oaks Park is actually 382 acres. And if you take the 125 acres, it makes Eight Oaks 257. In all the paperwork that you supply, Eight Oaks has never been reduced. That's absolutely amazing. An ordinance to declare its surplus real property located on Highway 521, that's deceiving as well. I am pro Eight Oaks Park. If you did not want a park, you should have named it Eight Oaks Land for Speculation. I suggest that county council reconsider this matter and make Eight Oaks a park again. I had the pleasure back in 2011 to take a kayak with some of the council, or some of the county members to go into the bridge to Eight Oaks where they had to propose kayak. And it was absolutely beautiful. There is no completion on that aspect of the park. They have not completed the majority of the park. And I don't understand how you can call it surplus property when it's actually, in essence, part of Eight Oaks. I think this is a very crafty way of deceiving the general public that you're not selling part of Eight Oaks. In essence, you are selling part of Eight Oaks, 125 acres. And I'm absolutely opposed to it. You promised all the citizens of Georgetown County that we were going to have a premier park out on Highway 521, and that has not materialized. I hope that you reconsider not to sell and not to break away property that belongs to Eight Oaks. It's very deceiving. Thank you for listening to me.
Elaine Cooper.
Good evening. I'm here again this evening to entreat this council to see the writing on the wall. The residents of the Wacoma Neck have repeatedly expressed their concerns with the current draft of the land use element, have offered to share our expertise and suggestions for compromise, have provided irrefutable evidence of the negative impacts of increasing density, have implored you time and time again to represent the will of your constituents and rework this element to include enforceable language to protect and preserve the neck. Let me remind you of our concerns once again. Lack of infrastructure to support this increased density that's proposed. Georgetown County is currently close to 100 million in arrears with stormwater and traffic projects. So is it a wise idea to add more people and more cars? Adding another 50% of our population to the mix makes zero sense to those of us who live there. I doubt that creeping down the highway or being stalled behind accident scenes will appeal to tourists either. Increased impermeable surfaces along with the decrease in natural vegetation and wetlands with concurrency level rise and land subsidence can lead to only one thing: more severe flooding. As Mr. Ellis addressed, this season, a record number of storm events are predicted to impact our area, and many of us are concerned not only about our property, but about our lives. 15 to 25 named storms, 8 to 13 hurricanes, and 4 to 7 major hurricanes forecast from June to November. Studies reveal that 90% of fatalities result from water related to heavy rainfall, with a significant number of preventable drownings happening when people attempt to drive through flooded areas. So do we leave our homes during an evacuation, only to be trapped on Highway 17 at the risk of drowning along with thousands of our neighbors? And there's the prohibitive cost of insuring our homes. Georgetown County ranks number two in the state at 2,400 a year for a single-family home with $150,000 replacement value and a $500 deductible. This doesn't include the recommended wind, hail, or flood coverage. Looking at the current average cost of a home on the neck, you'd be lucky to find a policy for less than $5,000 a year, and that's if you can find a company that will cover you at all. Lastly, but most importantly, the loss of our history, the loss of our way of life, and our peace of mind. People come to find something that's missing where they live. Then the county seems hell-bent on destroying what's left. There are so many reasons to limit growth on the neck. There's only one reason to increase growth: greed.
Paul Barnes.
Paul Barnes, I lived on the neck for over 25 years. And I'm at a loss to understand the experts that you brought in to present this comprehensive plan that chose to ignore flooding, traffic, evacuation, all of hurricanes. I'm just, I can't believe it. I've been, my previous life, on the Planning Commission for over 18 years. I've been to the National Planning Commission meetings. And I can't believe that, frankly, as a taxpayer, I paid money when they just ignored, frankly, the most important parts of the whole thing. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you all for all of your comments. Moving right along. Please note that there are four matters on the concerned agenda which were previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That is for current number 24-036, procurement number 23-046, procurement number 23-076, 78, I'm sorry, and RSQ number 23-055. Let's move down to our public hearings. And we'll have public hearings regarding, first of all, ordinance number 24-18, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, to provide for the expenditure thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, as well as adjustments to various fee schedules. The public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-18 is now open in case someone desires to speak. Not seeing anyone desire to speak, the public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-18 is closed. We move on down to our public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-20, to amend the picture lane used map to reflect the redesignation of property located at 7388 Chappie Road in Georgetown County identified as TMS number 03-0414, I'm sorry, TMS number 03-0441-012-00-00 for low-density residential to medium-density residential. The floor is now open for public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-30. 20, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyone desiring to speak regarding ordinance number 24-20? Seeing in the public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-20 is closed. We move on down to ordinance number 24-23, the ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget of Georgetown County. Anyone desiring to speak regarding ordinance number 24-23 at this public hearing is now open. Seeing the one, the public hearing regarding ordinance number 24-23 is closed. We move on down to appointment to boards and commissions. We have, we have an appointment to the Tourism and Management Commission, Consulor Mercado.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, move that we appoint Mr. Brian Miller to the Tourism and Management Commission.
The motion from Consul Mercado to appoint Mr. Brian Miller to the Tourism and Management Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consul Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Remove down to resolution of proclamations. Proclamation number 24-19 proclaiming the month of June as the joy of fatherhood month. Public Information Officer, Ms. Roach, accusers.
Council members, the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families is a nonprofit ministry established by the Sisters of Charity Foundation of South Carolina in 2002. They provide family education, legal guidance, and career resources, all of which have helped reduce poverty in families by promoting employability among fathers. Their goal is to work with communities, organizations, and government to help men be mature, responsible fathers who meet their children's emotional, spiritual, and material needs. The month of June provides the opportunity to bring more awareness to the many joys there truly are in fatherhood while recognizing the tireless efforts of fathers in shaping the future of our communities. We ask that you would please consider proclaiming the month of June as the joy of fatherhood month, and if you choose to do so, I believe there may be somebody in the audience who is here to accept the, the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Accers? Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 24-19?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Consular Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. So there's someone to...
Do we have somebody here to accept the proclamation from this group? I don't think we have anybody, sir.
Okay, we move on. We move on down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 24-18, an ordinance to make appropriations for ordinary county purposes for Georgetown County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, to provide for the expenditure thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, as well as adjustments to various fee schedules. Miss... A finance... Oh, Madam Administrator. Thank you.
Good, good evening. Before you is the FY '25 budget on third reading. The total for the budget is 104,756,180. This budget meets the requirements of South Carolina Statute 419-120 and 419-130, representing a 4.3 increase over last year's adopted budget. Milage, milages, mileage rates stayed the same, except for law enforcement, which increased by 1.2 mils. I'd like to take this time to thank County Council and staff for countless hours spent crafting this budget and providing to our citizens the services that meet our goals of sustainability, financial accountability, personnel retention, and support, along with special projects. These initiatives were aimed at technology, infrastructure, maintenance, and best in services. We are still working on upgrading technology, cybersecurity, and equipment and replacement. Lastly, a big shout out goes to the finance and HR teams for all the extra work for the CERP and the Disaster Recovery Fund. Since the budget was presented on second reading, there have been no changes in the total. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have as this, for this part of the process. I'm not Caris, but I think I remember most of it.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions from council for Madam Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a statement. Madam Administrator, I wish Caris was here tonight to thank her and her staff. Just thinking back short, four years ago, the problems that we were faced with, and I really was a pessimist, I said, "We're never getting out of the hole." And here we are, four short years, even though it's felt like a long time ago, on such financial footing that we are. And it's a big thanks to you and to your staff, what you have done and led us out of the deficits that we were running to a surplus. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Newton. Any other comments or questions from councilors? Thank you, Madam Administrator, for all you've done for, for the county to make sure we are funded appropriately. Thank you to you and your staff for your deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-18?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Consular Newton for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consul Mercado, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks again. We move down to second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 24-20, to amend the future land use map to reflect the redesignation of property located at 7388 Choppy Road in Georgetown County identified as TMS number 03-0441-012-00-00 for low-density residential to medium-density residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be addressing items 11A and 11B together as they pertain to the same parcel of land. This is 6.3 acres, it's located at 7388 Choppy Road, and as you said, this request is to go from Foreston Agriculture, or FA, to the Village 10,000 square foot residential district, or VR10. This parcel currently has one home located on it, and the rest of the six acres are vacant. The parcel is bordered by VR10 zoning to the southwest across on the other side of Choppy Road, and FA to both the north and the southeast, as you can see on the current zoning map that's in your packet. The existing uses in this area are mostly residential homes, with also, of course, forested and vacant lots. The parcel at 6.3 acres does have more than sufficient area for the VR10 zoning that is proposed, and this request is not considered to be spot zoning due to its large size and the adjacent VR10 zoning that's across the street. The current zoning of FA allows for farms, golf courses, bed and breakfast, single-family dwellings, landscaping services, and cemeteries, and it requires a minimum lot size of one acre. The proposed zoning of VR10 also allows for single-family dwellings, including mobile homes, some limited small business, businesses, and those are allowed on 10,000 square foot lots. There are also some conditional uses such as cluster housing, restaurants, except not drive-throughs, and again, bed and breakfast establishments. The setbacks for the proposed VR10 zoning are 25 in the front, 10 on the sides, and 15 in the rear. This property is not located in a regulated flood zone. The property has water services provided by the Brown's Ferry Water District and sewer services provided by the Georgetown County Water and Sewer District. Future land use map shows this area to be low-density residential, and an amendment to the map to medium-density is needed in order to facilitate the request. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item. There was no one to speak in favor of or oppose to the request, and the Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval for the rezoning 5 to 0, and there was also a motion to recommend approval for the future land use map to go from low to medium, and that was also a 5 to 0 vote. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions from council for Ms. Richardson?
Just a technical one, on the FA, we're changing it from FA to VR10. Can, can anything be built on a property that's on FA? Can you have one dwelling or...?
One dwelling per one-acre lot. So they could have one dwelling there now, if they subdivided into multiple one-acre lots, they could put multiple dwellings, but it would require a plat review and subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Richardson, most of the property in the area is on VR10 already, okay?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, almost all the property across the street on the other side of Choppy is, is VR10.
Thank you. You've heard a report from Ms. Richardson, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-20?
So moved.
Is moved by Consular Carolina for adoption for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Newton, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to item 11B, ordinance number 24-21, you've heard a report from Ms. Richardson again, is there a motion for approval of ordinance number 24-21? Moved by Consular Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Carolina, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go on down to ordinance number 24-22, to rezonate approximately 0.23 acres located off Litchfield Landings in the Litchfield area of Georgetown County identified as TMS number 04-0134-001-08-00 from general commercial to 10,000 square foot residential. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, this request should sound somewhat familiar to you all, as we've had a couple of these, and I believe we are, we will have one more at your next meeting. This request for this 0.23 acres is off Litchfield Landing in the Litchfield area, and is to go from general commercial to R10. We've done a couple of these lots a couple of years ago and more recently. This track is currently a vacant track, and the request is in order to allow for the construction of a single-family home. There is R10 zoning surrounding this property to the west and the south, but there's a PD planned development to the north and the east, and there are some wetlands located directly behind this parcel. This is not considered to be spot zoning due to the adjacent R10 zoning. The main reason for this request and for the other request has been the front yard setback. As we've said, general commercial has a front yard setback of 50 feet. General commercial allows for residential, single-family development on a 10,000 square foot lot, which this meets. However, the 50-foot front yard makes it difficult to develop these parcels residentially. And that's why we've had these requests for the R10 zoning. This property is in a regulated flood zone, it's an AE12, so the house will need to be elevated and will need to meet flood zone standards. Future land use map shows this area is transitional, so we do not believe that a future land use map amendment is needed to facilitate the request. The Planning Commission reviewed this, there was no one that spoke at public comment. They're recommending rezoning approval, and that was with a 5 to 0 vote.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any questions for Ms. Richardson from council?
Ms. Richardson, this was at the Landings, Landing Road?
Yes, the name of the street is Litchfield Landing.
Litchfield Landing, okay.
Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-22?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion for approval of ordinance number 24-22. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consul Mercado. Any, moved by Consular Newton, I think. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go on down to ordinance number 24-23, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 operating budget of Georgetown County. Ms. Madam Administrator?
Yes, sir. This ordinance is for the current budget, 23-24. It is specifically to address four items that we have. Two are grant-related, related to an EDA grant at the airport. The next one is related to a previous item for adjusting salary wages in the law enforcement fund. And the last one is a budget amendment, trading out different types of trucks for public works. And those are the adjustments that we ask in the current year's budget, so we can address these projects before year end. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have on this.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions from council for Madam Administrator? Thank you. Hearing none, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-23?
So moved.
Is moved by Consular Anderson for adoption of ordinance number 24-23, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go on down to ordinance number 24-24, an ordinance to declare surplus real property located on US Highway 521/178, Hamaika Street, totaling approximately 125.39 acres adjacent to Eight Oaks Park and Disney, that's TMS number 02-1008-006-00-00, and to authorize the disposition thereof. Attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Director Goodell is going to handle this one, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, from time to time, county staff does review properties and facilities across the county to determine if there are opportunities to declare pieces of property or other facilities a surplus. This particular parcel was part of the original 382 acres that were purchased back during the CIP before projects were actually sited or, or built during our master recreation plan. Phase 2 for the Eight Oaks parcel included construction of the current six-field complex that's located at Eight Oaks, along with a concession restroom facility and parking. Those amenities have been constructed. Additionally, there was always a plan for phase 2 within the perimeter fence of the baseball softball complex, which would add two additional 300-foot fields and an additional concession restroom scoring facility. All of those needs are accommodated within the existing perimeter fence. Additionally, we renovated on the site, which was not a use that was identified in the conceptual master plans, but we renovated a building left by International Paper, which is now our maintenance facility. And we've also done some, some great improvements to our stormwater drainage pond at the front, which is now our fishing lake. So we have, have done a little bit of things that were not necessarily ever part of any master plan on the site. I put in your proposal or in your documents a picture of what is at Eight Oaks Park now. You also have the conceptual master plan, and you may recall that these conceptual master plans were developed for a variety of sites purchased during the CIP. They show potential things that could go on each of the sites, but none have been funded or approved for construction at this point. So when we started looking at this parcel, and especially the parcel that we have identified as potential surplus, the Eight Oaks Park complex remains as is with no impact. The portion of property that we've identified is across a very significant wetland and, and vegetated buffer. It is to the northeastern side of the park, or of the parcel. There were some conceptual multipurpose fields that are pictured on that original drawing. We have, also, there's tennis courts that are pictured. Both of those things were funded in the master plan and were elected to be constructed at other sites. The tennis courts, as an example, were built at East Bay, as that was thought to be a better fit for tennis players, and, and it has proven to be a very successful choice. And then... And then the Beck complex was constructed at our Beck Recreation Center to include the regulation football field, track, and basketball courts. So we actually did initially look at the cost of potentially constructing multipurpose fields in this location. The cost for infrastructure actually exceeded the field construction cost because of the wetland that's dividing this piece of property from the park site, from the softball-baseball site, and pond and maintenance facility. So that is why we've come to the conclusion that this particular piece of property actually would not impact anything with regard to the ball fields. It also still provides us with over 200 acres of undeveloped land that we can continue to expand our hiking trails. Right now, we've got about four miles of trails at the facility and our new orienteering course. These things also will not be affected if you so choose to declare this piece of property surplus. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, Counsel Anderson.
I guess my first question is that, I think you said that 125 acres is mostly wetlands.
It is about 40, let's see, it's not one big piece of dry land or big wetland structure, but it is actually made up of 42 acres of wet and 84 of usable, potentially usable land. But it's not all in just one chunk. It kind of goes, the wetland kind of goes through the property, and then there's some sections of upland.
Okay, and we'll still have 200 acres to do with what we would like to plan to do in the future.
Yes, that'd still be available as forest, as trails. At one point, well, on the conceptual master plan, there was consideration to do some camping, as an example, with the announcement of the RV park that's supposed to be coming across 521, which we're very excited about, and we feel like that'll be a great asset with tournament play at Eight Oaks. That would kind of be redundant for us to get in the business of operating camping, if there's 400, 100-some-odd sites commercially operated right across the highway, especially given the staffing that we have and the money we have to do those kind of things.
And you mentioned, I think, to begin with, we still had two fields that, in the original plan, I guess, baseball fields that we still wanted to go forward with, we just didn't have the funding.
Absolutely.
And the question, I don't think you can answer, but maybe we could go in this direction, is would the price tag on that property cover us being able to build those other two fields?
Very good question.
What do you think?
It'll be very close.
Pardon?
It would be very close.
Close enough to where we could plan on doing the fields?
Yes.
All right, well, that's all I needed to know, then. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. The acquisition of Eight Oaks going back to 2009, and, you know, the word tossed around that this was to be like our flagship for sports and athletics and also pouring into Primarily, there's baseball, that is the sport that's out there primarily right now. Any thought of soccer fields, even a county pool? If, I mean, if we're looking at creating the flagship for sports and athletics for Georgetown County? And again, in the planning and whenever the funding rolls around, that we could actually take this up to another level right now? Because you have people in my district who don't see the sports that would attract to that location. It's just baseball right now. And it's like, you know, whatever the dream is, and we call it the flagship for sports and athletics and all working to attract tourism, where's the plan for these other amenities?
So actually, if you'll recall, as part of the master planning process, the county was divided into four regions, and various regions got the flagship sports tourism facility. Eight Oaks was designated to be the larger of the baseball softball complexes, which it is, and which we have hosted larger tournaments there. The soccer multipurpose fields were put at Staples Park. So there was never in any master plan that I've seen any intention or promise to build tournament-level fields for other sports at Eight Oaks. It was to be the flagship baseball softball complex.
Counsel Newton?
Beth, what year was the master plan put together for that Eight Oaks?
So the master plans were all done at the same time, around 2010. They were done for all the parcels built, including Pleasant Hill, Staples Park, Eight Oaks, Olive Park. All of those were done at the same time.
Now that we're 14 years past 2010, do you see a possibility we might need to go back and visit that master plan and redo it or update it? And if so, how would we go about doing that? Things change, and things have changed rapidly here lately.
Absolutely, like pickleball. We didn't know about pickleball back then, so we're starting to add pickleball to facilities. As far as Eight Oaks meeting our needs for current and future, to some degree, baseball softball, it's currently doing that. The reasoning behind, or whatever the choice was for us to split our tournament baseball softball, as an example, into five different locations. So you wouldn't go back and then and put 15 more fields at Eight Oaks, because you've already invested all of that money. I mean, you could, but the money that you're going to have to put into it to unregionalize and, you know, put those facilities in one location, it would be difficult to see that decision made at this point.
You know, I'm basing that off something you said. We have the RV park going right down the road, and we had plans in the master plan for RVs at Eight Oaks, so that should be eliminated. And like Councilman Carolina said, maybe we can add something else. But the master plan seems like it needs to be updated.
That was your 20-year plan, so, you know, now we're...
It seems like it's just a little outdated. I mean, not major changes, I'm talking about just some tweaking. But with that being said, with the land that's left, excluding the wetlands that are left, how much available acreage is left for expansion if needed at Eight Oaks?
So I haven't run the numbers, well, I'm sure I have them, but I didn't really familiarize myself with the numbers on the side where our park is, but there are pockets, there are some pockets of property. But the entire site, if you look at the conceptual master plan, or you look at any of the other areas that I put into the package, there is a good bit of wetland covering the rest of this site, including the 125 acres. So where you see some talk of some conceptual camping, a lot of that was primitive. There wasn't a lot of space to do true RV parking. It was more primitive-type camping. Maybe a cabin or two was discussed at some point up along, back towards the railroad track at the top part of the property, but there's still a whole lot of wet that runs through the entire property. I can certainly take a look at it and give you those numbers, though.
Okay, so I'm looking at the numbers in my head, around 200 acres left, something like that.
Yeah, 200 acres is the total that would be left that is not already improved. The improved property that you see now, the maintenance facility, the ballpark complex, the infrastructure parking, that covers 56 acres.
Thank you, Beth.
Beth, roughly how much does it cost to do a ball field?
Depends on what kind of ball field you want to do, but we just finished the complex at Waverly Park, and it was over $6 million for four fields.
Four fields?
And a restroom facility, yes. Very expensive at this point. Everything is expensive. I did, in 2017, I did probable cost estimate to finish the two fields and the concession restroom facility, and it was 1.19 million, and that was 2017.
Okay, any further questions for Ms. Goodell? Thank you, Beth. Is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-24?
So moved.
It's moved by Counsel Anderson for approval of ordinance number 24-24. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We move on down to ordinance number 24-25, in order to declare surplus real property located off of Highway 17 along Wilbrook Boulevard and known as the Wilbrook Bike Path, and to authorize the disposition thereof. Attorney Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property, or the bike path, as I understand, historically was privately owned. This would move it to surplus property of the county, and the idea is it will go back under private ownership, maintenance, it would still remain open for public use, but the county would no longer be responsible for the maintenance of it nor the liability for accidents on it. I'm happy to answer any particular questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Watson. Any questions for Attorney Watson from counsel?
Yes, who would be maintaining?
My understanding is that the surrounding neighborhoods out there, developments out there, have formed a separate entity which would take over ownership and ensure it and be maintaining it.
Any other questions for Attorney Watson? Hearing then, is there a motion pertaining to ordinance number 24-25?
I move.
It's moved by Counsel McCall for adoption, for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to our first reading of ordinances, which will be read into the record only. Ordinance number 24-26, to amend the future land use map to reflect the redesignation of the property totaling approximately 130.58 acres located along Highway 701 in Georgetown County, identified as TMS number 02-1009-010-00-00, from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Ordinance number 24-27, to rezone one parcel totaling approximately 130.58 acres, identified as TMS number 02-1009-010-00, located on the western side of Highway 701, just north of its intersection with Highway 51, from one-half acre residential to a planned development called Carolina Trails. Then you have ordinance number 24-28, to rezone approximately 0.22 acres of property located in Litchfield Landings, identified as TMS number 04-0134-001-06, from general commercial to 10,000 square foot residential. Ordinance number 24-29, to rezone one parcel of approximately 1.01 acres located at 5290 Berkeley-Cole and Merrells Inlet, identified as TMS number 41-04-04-010-09-00, from far as agricultural to one-half acre residential. And you have ordinance number 24-30, in order to approve the revised land use element of the comprehensive plan. Ordinance number 24-31, in order to authorize in pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, to amend the execution delivery fee in lieu of ad valorant taxes agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Craftmade Properties LLC, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates, and other project companies, collectively company, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorant taxes, incentive, and other related matters. Then you have ordinance number 24-32. Now, ordinance authorized in pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, as amended the execution delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorant taxes agreement by and between Georgetown County, South Carolina, and Spry Properties LLC, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates, and other project companies, collectively company, providing for a fee in lieu of ad valorant taxes, incentive, and other related matters. Okay, we move on down to our approval of our minutes from our meeting of May 14, 2024. Is there a motion for adoption of the minutes of May 14, 2024?
I move.
It's moved by Counsel Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. I see we have a legal briefing for executive session.
Right.
We have a legal briefing regarding executive session, legal briefing regarding contractual matters pursuant to SECant Annotated Section 30-4-78.2. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
It's moved by Counsel Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are now entering to executive session to have a legal briefing regarding contractual matters pursuant to SECant Annotated Section 30-4-78.2. We are now moving to executive session. We are now moving to executive session.
We are back. Is there a motion to move into, move back into open session?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor of moving back into open session, please raise your hand. Oppose?
We are now back into open session. Please let the record reflect that we just returned from our executive session to receive legal briefing regarding contractual matters pursuant to SC Code annotated section 30-4-78.2. Please note also that no votes were taken while we were in executive session.
Any further agenda business to come before council's leaving? Hearing then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We are now adjourned. Motion carries. We are now adjourned.